I don't think, are we on?
Yep. You're right.
I don't have to press it?
We're on.
Okay. I'm so used to our expedited system upstairs now where you can actually hear us. This special meeting of the Troy City Council and the Planning Commission is called to order September 20th. And would you do the roll call, please, Mrs. Bartholomew, for City Council and Planning Commission?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Here.
Lemming?
Here.
Howarlac?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Planning Commission Chairman Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner Edmonds?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
Senzika?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Stratt?
Here.
Teagle?
Here.
Allman?
Here.
Black?
More than present from both bodies. We have a list of discussion items of things, and it's nice to be all together for this. And Mr. Zurla, you're doing the introductions, believe.
Well, thank you very much. Because of the hour, I'm going to forget about the notes that I had made. Just want to indicate that the role of city management, and city managers in particular, have changed over the decades since the profession was founded. It initially started out with city engineers because managers were needed essentially to build water systems, sewer systems, streets, roads, and bridges. After the depression through the 1970s, there was great emphasis on financial management of municipalities to make sure that budgets were in order and that revenue expenditure was correct according to them. In the 80s, it became economic development at the forefront, which is held still in high esteem. I think now in conjunction with an ability to restructure municipal organizations and work on regional aspects as well for economic development. And in Troy, as you all know, with your help, we need to create and have created an environment of investment because economic development is the only arrow in our quiver of enhancing revenue streams. And again, thanks to the Council, and thanks to the Planning Commission, City Attorney, with all the great work that you're doing. You gave good direction as well as took recommendations from staff and our consultants on doing what we can to keep Troy at the forefront of development. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Miller.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, John. I was going to go stand up at the podium, but I think if it's okay, I'll sit right here. I'm going to be relatively quick in my presentation. Basically, my section is to talk a little bit about what we have done. And I'm going to give a summary of what we have done and what we've completed. And I know Councilwoman Kerwin has mentioned Troy Futures Division 2020. That was adopted in 2006 by the city. And that, believe it or not, helped an emphasis on planning and future planning for the city. Both the master plan was identified in there and also a rewrite of the zoning ordinance. Also, in 2006, the DDA developed the Big Beaver Corridor Study, which set up sort of a 50,000-foot future view of how Big Beaver should be in the future to help redevelop that area. And also, along that time, there was a Downtown Development Authority Investment Strategy, which was also developed. And this strategy would be useful to bring out and have everyone look at this table if you haven't had an opportunity because it really spells out how to create an environment of investment. And that was specifically for along Big Beaver. But a lot of the techniques and ideas could be used all throughout the community. Also, in 2008, we commissioned and conducted the what's known as the Zucker Report, but actually it was called the Development Approval Permit Process Report. And we provided for you in your package all 102 recommendations, which were included in the Zucker Report, and the status of where we are with each of those. So if you have any questions in the future about those and where we're at, please feel free to talk to myself or Brent about that. And then, in 2008, the master plan was adopted by the Planning Commission. Now, just really quickly, the master plan is a major policy document for the city, and this was a very unique master plan. It was very innovative because it dealt with some real issues which we're dealing with as opposed to the more traditional master plans, which were really just a future land use map. This is much more than that. The other very important tool for this is it sets the policy guidance for the zoning ordinance, which we'll talk a little bit more from Brent and Mr. Carlisle. Now, I want to talk about some things which we are working on and getting close, some Big Beaver design guidelines. The final draft is prepared. It's just about completed. That is going to be critical in the sense that it is providing direction for the zoning ordinance, especially the form-based code elements of the zoning ordinance, but also it will be a tool that we use with developers and their architects along Big Beaver as they come forward and design their projects. The zoning ordinance, we have a preliminary draft complete. Well, I guess I get to do this and Brent, since I'm talking about. The preliminary draft is on the table for you to take a look at. We did not want to hand it out because we did not want you to completely edit it and look at it. It is really rough at this point.
It's actually incomplete at this point.
Okay.
But we wanted to catch you up and let you know the progress we've made to date. Sorry, Mark.
All right. And you were going to address all of that when we get to that point in the evening. We also have a working draft of an economic development strategy, which John, myself, and Pam are working on. And really, and that was the summary of what we have done. Brent's going to start talking of what we're doing and where we're going right to this point.
And I promise to be brief. You didn't get to this part.
Oh, I was trying to be brief. I was trying to be too brief. Ultimately, this was just my summary, is that in trying to create this environment of investment, we're trying to create a good place to live and work, you know, create the environment of investment. And I like to use this little catchphrase, is we want to create fast, fair, predictable development decisions. If yes is yes, yes. But if no is no, don't run it out. Be upfront and say no is no. And this all sort of blends together with all the documents we talked about and what Brent and Dick and even Pam are going to talk about a little bit later.
Well, as you know, the zoning ordinance is a cooperative project. It's a partnership with the Planning Department, Planning Commission, and Carlisle Werben Associates. The project started around January of 2009. The draft is about 90 percent complete. And what you've got on the table is kind of a where we are today, kind of an update of the document. I invite anyone to thumb through it and look at it. It's not ready for to take the red pen out and go over it in great detail because we'll have some fine tuning to do. There are four articles that still have to be completed, okay? Those articles are those zoning districts that are not covered by the form-based code. And Dick's going to give you a primer on form-based codes here in a few minutes. The use standards for specific uses permitted in the zoning ordinance, definitions, and the map. And actually, city staff is going to do the map. Carlisle Werben is going to assist us with the other three articles. When these three articles, these actually three articles are going to be reviewed by the Planning Commission the next two study sessions. Once they're reviewed and we get comments, we're going to incorporate them into the draft. And our intent is to have the approval-ready draft by the end of the year. So we've driven the ball 90 yards down the field, and now we have to punch it in for the final 10 yards. We're real close to the goal line, so it's actually a pretty good feeling. Now, what I'd like to do is, rather than read this document word for word here, I'm just going to really touch on what we're trying to accomplish with this new zoning ordinance. The new zoning ordinance is going to be easy to use and easy to understand. It's going to have charts, tables, illustrations. It's going to be written in plain English and very easy for the layman or the professional to use. It's going to implement the master plan and the Big Beaver Corridor Study, which Mark touched on earlier. It's going to encourage green development. We're going to strengthen the landscape provisions. We're going to encourage people to use innovative stormwater design. It's going to permit and encourage mixed use. And finally, it's going to help create an environment of investment in Troy, which John touched on earlier. There's 10 ways the zoning ordinance is going to create an environment of investment in Troy. One, a wider range of uses permitted in many areas of the city. What this is going to do is it's going to increase usability, marketability potential for properties in Troy. Streamline approval process for many uses, including PUDs. It allows developers to get their projects up and running quicker. Most desired uses are easiest to get approved. This is really critical. We've, one of the things that the Planning Commission and City Council have tried to do the last couple of years is reuse light industrial buildings. And we've really expanded the range of uses permitted in light industrial areas. However, a lot of these uses are special use. They're permitted by special use, which means you've got to go through the application process, there's a public hearing, and you've got to pay the fee, and there's time. And what we are going to try and accomplish with this ordinance is those uses that are easiest to get approved, maybe they're administrative. Maybe the uses permitted in light industrial across the board, administrative approval. Quicker, again, encouraging environment of investment. Modern parking requirements. A lot of our parking requirements, we require too much parking, particularly for large office buildings. You just have to go down Big Beaver, look around, and you can see these expansive, essentially empty asphalt parking lots. And that's for buildings that are 100 percent occupied. Implement the vision of the master plan and the Big Beaver Corridor Study. Encourage the reuse of existing buildings. We've got literally hundreds of buildings that are sitting vacant now. What can we do to fill these buildings while the zoning ordinance is addressing that? Adds value to non-residential properties. If you picture Big Beaver and some of the form-based code provisions that Dick's going to get into here real briefly, what this is going to do is it's going to encourage and permit intensification of these properties, thereby adding value to these properties, thereby encouraging reinvestment in the city. Protecting single-family residential neighborhoods, that's very important. One of the goals of the master plan was to protect single-family residential neighborhoods. And you'll notice in the draft that we essentially have not even touched R-1A through R-1E, the one-family residential districts. It's important, one of the reasons, one of the reasons people move to Troy and stay in Troy is because of the single-family residential neighborhoods. We want to protect those neighborhoods. Nine, the document's better organized and easier to use. That's self-explanatory. We don't even have a table of contents in our existing ordinance. This is going to have a table of context, an index. It's going to be web-based. It's going to be--
Hyperlinked.
Hyperlinked. It's going to be a significantly more usable document. And finally, it's going to create form-based codes for Big Beaver, Maple Road, and the neighborhood nodes. And with that, I'd like to introduce Dick Carlisle from Carlisle Werben Associates, who's going to give you a primer on form-based codes and also touch on some other very important components of this zoning ordinance. This is forward.
Okay. Well, I promise I won't be brief tonight.
We do have a--
Well, anyway, I know that we presented this many, you know, we have had some presentations in the past with the Council, probably not with any kind of detail. And the Planning Commission has had a number of discussions in our office about this, and have worked very hard to, you know, to get this to where it is right now. So we're very excited about the fact that there's going to be a significant form-based code element, not to the entire code. There's going to be some parts of it, certainly that are going to be what we call form influence. But there's going to be some significant areas that will be using form-based elements. And those, well, I'll get to those in just a moment. But one of the challenges that we have is that, you know, there's just, you can't really, there's not a model code to really rely upon. Particularly, a lot of the form-based codes that have been developed around the country are really more appropriate for greenfield sites. We have a community here where we're really trying to encourage redevelopment. We're trying to use, we're trying to encourage more efficient use of existing properties. We're trying to encourage infill development. And so the real challenge of developing this code was to make it more contextually based. And what I mean, what I mean by that, it had to be very much based upon the context of where these properties are located here in the city of Troy. And so that's essentially how this ordinance had been crafted. We've obviously followed heavily in the Big Beaver regulations, and that's probably where, the Big Beaver regulations are probably the most complex of the areas that we have developed, but for good reason, because we had certainly a lot more detailed goals and objectives for that particular area of the city. The Big Beaver area, we relied heavily on the study and the master plan, and it's primarily confined to the area where the DDA boundaries are located. Again, as I said, it's very contextually based. It's based on the street types, and obviously, Big Beaver is the main street that it's based upon. But we also have intersecting arterials, and we have local streets that all have to have a different approach taken in the form-based code. And the types of site, the specific types of sites that redevelopment, upon which redevelopment can occur. You know, we have a variety of different properties along Big Beaver. I mean, it's, we have properties that are of pretty minimal depth. We have a lot of larger sites that we have more to work with. And so yet, we had to clarify and classify the types of sites there so that we could develop regulations that were realistic for redevelopment of a lot of those sites. And so sessions, in essence, this is the Big Beaver Corridor area, as we have, we've categorized the entire corridor into three site types and three street types, and the regulations are very specifically, very specific to those areas. So obviously, you would not want to see a level of intensity of development on an interior area which perhaps bordered residential areas as you would want to see along Big Beaver Road. But what it turned out, what has really turned out to be, we've been able to sort of consolidate some of the areas that were identified in the Big Beaver study to make it a little bit more workable for a zoning regulation. And that's how we ended up with the street type and site type of organization for the form-based code for Big Beaver. Maple Road. Maple Road, we are applying form-based code on a more limited basis, primarily on the frontage in Maple Road District. And I have the zoning map to show you. And again, the idea here is to try to encourage the redevelopment potential of the frontage properties. We thought that was really where we should be focusing our attention on with the form-based code. In addition to the form-based code portion of Maple, the, all of Maple Road and the surrounding area are going to have a much wider range of permitted uses and building forms to really foster an environment of investment. We really need to open up the uses in this entire area. It's way too restrictive. You have industrial buildings that will probably never be used industrially again, you know, but have great potential to be repurposed. And so we have, we have, you know, we have that philosophy, and the Planning Commission has really been, I think, really spearheading this in terms of really just, you know, opening up those uses. Now, does that mean it's going to be unregulated? Of course not, you know? But will, really, this is the one thing we can do for property owners and the development community in Maple Road, and that is really remove the restrictions for use. And this is the area that form-based code will be applied to. Again, as you can see, it's primarily the frontage areas, and it's a little more simple along Maple Road than it is on Big Beaver because, you know, it's, we have less complexity there in terms of the frontage properties. So there, we've been able to categorize site types, well, only into two site types. And essentially, when we talk about site types, it's essentially the size of these sites, okay? Certainly, the smaller, the smaller sites are going to be a lot more difficult to develop intensively than some of the larger sites. And so that's how the sites are really characterized. And again, street types, street types in this case are predominantly the Maple Road frontage as well as the intersecting arterials. Now, one of the things that the Commission has been really embracing, and I think this is going to be very important, is entirely new approach to our M1 district. And I wanted to mention that, even though it's not a form-based code, it's going to be very complimentary because, to me, what's had to happen on Maple is you start with the frontage properties because, you know, you improve the visibility, you begin to raise property values in that area. It's going to really spur development in the interior portions. But what do we need to do to do that? Well, we need, again, to open up the possibilities of use in these interior areas. We've got a lot of large buildings there that are underutilized and, you know, a lot of vacancies. And so the M1 district will now be rebranded as the Integrated Industrial and Business District, in which nearly all uses will be permitted by right. And so you will have a variety of uses that could be permitted there. Obviously, it's going to be much more of a market-based approach. It's going to be based on what those buildings are useful for. And, you know, it could be some industrial uses, it could be some assembly, but it could also be some commercial uses. It could be some sports-related uses, such as gymnastics or other things of that nature. I mean, we're really, we're really telling the market, saying, you know, we're going to regulate this in terms of appropriate design, but in terms of use, we're going to give you the opportunity to have the market tell us what's the appropriate uses of those areas. Over the last several years, and I think one of the reasons that this has driven us in this direction is the Planning Department has received a number of adaptive reuse requests for former M1 properties, and we've had to continue to amend the ordinance in a lot of cases or interpret the ordinance to accommodate those particular uses. And so this is really going to, you know, really rectify that whole, that whole concept and really create this as a very aggressive redevelopment district. The neighborhood nodes is another area, as you remember from the master plan, I think we had something like 26 neighborhood nodes or something like that. Since I've been working with you, I've noticed that in those neighborhood nodes, I mean, this is where we've had a lot of sort of tension. A lot of tension when we've had redevelopment in those areas. And yet, redevelopment needs to occur. We have so many areas along the way where we have a lot of commercial vacancies. We have vacant properties or that maybe, you know, really underutilized that are adjacent to residential areas. And so we really need, and mostly what has happened was we, you know, we've required people to have to go the PUD route in order to develop property in those particular areas. So again, this is where a form-based approach will be used. It will provide for a wider range of mixed uses for sites that are geared towards higher intensity or lower intensity if they are needed to be in a transitional role. So in other words, it will provide us with a better tool to have transition between, you know, intense commercial areas and the neighboring residential areas. There'll be, as with the other form-based code elements, there's going to be much more emphasis on design and the form of buildings and probably some de-emphasis on use in that particular case. So in essence, you know, these properties are going to look better. And if you might recall, this was the, this was the graphic from the, from the master plan that identified where these neighborhood nodes were located. This is exactly, this is an example of actually how it now applies. We have, we have now applied on the zoning map where, you know, exactly how this is going to lay out for every, every one of the neighborhood nodes. And again, it's a categorization of the site types predominantly based on size and the street types, which will drive regulations for each one of these neighborhood nodes. And I think, again, this will be, this is going to be a very effective tool to, you know, to regulate these areas and to encourage their redevelopment. As we said, the nodes were selected in the master plan process. They will be labeled in the zoning ordinance just the same way as they're named in the master plan. But each node will be unique, reflected in the master plan and in the draft form-based code. There's a final area that I'm really excited to be able to report tonight because I don't think I did report it the last time I spoke to the Planning Commission. But we were, we were being challenged and challenging ourselves in terms of how are we going to incorporate sustainable development concepts in the zoning ordinance? You know, the Planning Commission, City Council have worked a lot on this issue of the last number of years, you know, green development and things of that nature. And we, you know, we were trying to figure out a way that we could actually incorporate this in an incentive, on an incentive basis, and that is exactly what we've done. There are, we have now developed criteria in the ordinance that, where there are sustainable measures that are incorporated in projects, they can be used to meet certain ordinance requirements. For example, if someone were to propose a green roof, we will be, this, the ordinance will now allow it to, that limit to give them credit towards their landscaping requirements. So, you know, they're not, they're not going to be penalized for doing a green roof in that particular case, and then still have to meet all the landscape requirements. A green roof, for example, can actually satisfy some of the landscaping requirements. We are opening up the possibilities for stormwater management. So in circumstances where someone is coming back and asking for, maybe they're going to ask for additional parking over and above the ordinance requirements, well, there's incentives in there to allow them to do so, perhaps with permissible payment or to incorporate some other alternative stormwater management strategy in there that will be used to help satisfy that requirement. So I would think when we're, when we're done with this, we'll say that Troy will probably be the first community in Michigan to implement an approach like this. So I think it's very exciting from that standpoint because instead of requiring it, I did a lot of research on codes from, predominantly where you see sustainable development codes built into the zoning ordinance are predominantly on both coasts, as you might, you know, you might, you might think. And in almost all cases, in those cases, it was mandatory. And I just didn't think at this, at the outset of this, that that was the right way to go. I think we have to walk before we run. And I think we can still get there by providing incentives in our ordinance to do that. And so that's why I think this is going to be a really different approach, a refreshingly different approach. We're going to really incentivize sustainable design projects. And so I really want to compliment the Commission, too, because as I was struggling trying to figure out how we're going to actually do this, this actually came up in discussions with the Planning Commission about how, how we can sort of, you know, incentivize sustainable design and give people credit for doing the things that we want them to do. And so I think we're making a lot of good progress in that regard, and that will be, that will be an integral part of the code. Stormwater management, obviously, is something that's got to be a lot more emphasis placed upon. And alternative energy is obviously going to be part of the code also because, you know, use of more renewable energy, that will be part of the whole sustainable design chapter. So, well, I already said this, but, you know, there's also a strong emphasis placed in this thing on the reuse of existing buildings and the redevelopment of existing sites, which also fits, you know, very nicely in the form-based codes. The idea is to really conserve our natural resources, reduce the use of energy in both construction and daily operations, and foster a mix of uses and encourage pedestrian, bicycle, and public transit use. And those were all part of the objectives of the Sustainable Design Chapter. I think these are all things that we've talked about. These are all things that have been part of the master plan. And now, I think what is exciting is we're actually putting it into action and actually implementing that so that when someone comes in, you know, we can say, well, you know, maybe instead of doing it this way, why don't you try doing it this way? And you're going to actually, you know, you're going to be incentivized to do it that way. And so that's why I think it's going to be both refreshing and exciting that we'll be able to do that now. So I think, just as a little bit more, we're actually, we've developed a process where a sustainable design project can be pre-qualified administratively. So in other words, if someone is desiring to, you know, they know they're going to have, they're going to be looking for either certain discretionary decisions to be made, or they're going to be looking for certain flexibilities that are permitted by ordinance, they will be able to come in and pre-qualify as a sustainable design project that will include an administrative process and a review from a sustainable design review committee that will be consistent of people other than just staff. The projects are going to be qualified as an SDP through a points rating system, and we've already been able to develop a checklist in that particular regard. It's highly based on some believed criteria, which has been very helpful, but we'll be able to, we'll essentially assign points for doing certain measures. And so this is really going to streamline things right in the beginning because if someone wants to do this-- someone wants to do this, they can be pre-qualified, so that when they come before the Planning Commission, or the City Council for their approval, they will have already gone through the process of being pre-qualified as a sustainable design project, so that when you're looking at the things for which they want to replace sustainable design measures for certain other requirements, you'll know that we've already pre-qualified it as an SDP. And this is also a unique process. I have not seen this done quite to this extent anywhere else. And we are going to have, we are going to place a lot of emphasis in our stormwater management, low-impact development techniques. You know, the state of Michigan has, has adopted a lit manual, and we are essentially adopting much of that by reference. We have all the details that have been worked out with the Engineering Department, but we're certainly wanting to incorporate a lot of low-impact development measures for stormwater management in the ordinance. I think I'm going to move along here. Renewable energy, obviously, there's renewable energy requirements in the ordinance. We are seeing wind energy becoming more popular. We do need to have requirements to regulate it and to allow it. Obviously, there are issues associated with it, which the Planning Commission has reviewed. The language that we've prepared provided us with a lot of comments. There's height, there's, you know, there are issues regarding placement, noise, setbacks, those will all be addressed. There's also issues related to solar energy and solar rights, and there's language in the ordinance now dealing with that. Is it pretty?
I'll be very brief.
Since I was so, so long.
I'm going to read all, I'm going to read all 102 recommendations here.
I thought we were, I thought we were going to update a current project.
That's what we're doing right now. The Zucker Report, I'm not going to read them, but there's three, I thought, are very relevant, and just a brief touch on, three of the recommendations that we've completed in the Planning Department. Number 23, start accepting electronic site plans. We are now, we accept electronic site plans. We actually submit the, we provide the agenda to the Planning Commission electronically, and when they, when they come to the Planning Commission meeting, there's laptops set up, so they've got digital electronic agendas, and we've basically eliminated paper being, being sent out from our planning department, which is cost savings, it's environmentally friendly, and it's, it's more efficient. It saves us a lot of time. 45, use contractors as necessary to meet performance standards. We have, we're a hybrid planning department. We partner with our planning consultant, Carlisle Wartman. They, they assist us in reviewing application projects, and submitting reports, and presenting reports at the Planning Commission, and that service is paid for by fees. The Troy taxpayer is not paying for these application reviews, it's, it's the developers. And finally, number 94, variance request applications are managed by the Planning Department. About a year ago, various, the Board of Zoning Appeals Liaison was, was the Director of Building and Zoning. Now, the BZA liaison is our zoning compliance specialist, and actually, Paul Evans is here. Paul, if you can stand up and smile and wave. Paul is also responsible for code enforcement in the city. And for those of you who have not met Paul, this is, I thought this was a good opportunity for him to, for you to connect the face with the name. But it's, having, having the BZA staff liaison, working next to the Planning Commission liaison, really helps with efficiencies and, and that's, that's a good thing. Project status, there's two and a half pages of projects, development applications that the Planning Commission has considered over the last year, and again, I'm not going to read these, but they run the gamut from, from new construction to renovations, or additions to existing uses, reuses of existing buildings, and parking reductions. And there are also economic development activities going on that I'm not involved in, but Pam Lempick, our economic development specialist, is, and she's going to give a , a probably very, very brief presentation.
But I come with news, I come with success story here, so.
Okay, and before Pam goes, I have a question on, one that you have here, on project status, and that is with VIMA International. What's the status there? Are they really going to another community, or are they going to be here?
What I have, what I understand is based, based on some upper management's conversations with representatives of VIMA, is they're considering relocating to another community.
Right. I actually talked with Frank Irvin, their governmental relations guy, and although the decision isn't 100%, but it's very likely that they will be relocating to Rochester Hills.
And why is that?
Well, multi-fold, multi-
Mark, why don't we let the Planning Director, the Planning Commission Chair respond to that?
Yeah, let me talk about that. I think there may be some misunderstanding regarding what happened. We hosted VIMA for a study session. They came in with their plans, they had planned to do some building on a vacant site, they were going to add about 350 employees, and we went through the plans with them, and there were two issues raised by the Planning Commission. One was, since we were doing form-based coding, we asked if they would consider moving their new building, which hadn't been constructed yet, closer to the, the avenue. Second was, they had a plan for parking in front of the building, and we had suggested they might want to consider putting a berm in to further screen that parking. They said they would consider it and come back. They came back for preliminary site plan approval, and at that meeting, it was represented by Kevin Bidson, architect, and Thomas Kemp of the Development Company. Discussed it, they did not want to move the building to the highway, they did not want a berm. They didn't have to do either of those two things, they met all the requirements. It was asked by a member of the Planning Commission if they would consider putting a berm in, and the two huddled and said, "Yes." Very cordial discussion, very complete, and with that, it was moved that a berm be in preliminary site plan. It was approved. To our consternation, about a week or two later, we discovered that upper management, I think it's Magna Corporation, was upset that we insisted on having a berm. We discussed it with staff and the Planning Commission, they did something, or we did something, and I've never seen it happen before. Planning Commission on its own revisited that and deleted the requirement of a berm from the preliminary site plan. I specifically talked with Representative Magna Corporation. He seemed pleased. I've heard a report that the commission was rude to the representatives, and nothing could be further than the truth. If you had the opportunity to review a tape of our meeting, I think that'll be quite evident. We were especially cordial, and extended to them a courtesy that I have never seen done before with the Planning Commission, in the suispekte moving to remove the berm from preliminary site plan. And I'm beginning to believe that that really wasn't the problem. They were looking for further tax considerations, which are beyond the Planning Commission's purview, and that's where it is. But Planning Commission did what was right, they did it with the consent of the petitioner, who later was reversed by someone a little higher in the organization. And I think you can hold your head high that we represented the city of Troy well, we were courteous, and gave them an extra consideration.
Now, now that we have our new tax abatement on, on real, as well as the other, do you think that they might consider Troy again, or not?
No.
No?
No.
So, they've made their decision.
Well, to be quite frank, it's kind of hard to compete, John, do you mind if I tell?
Go ahead.
It's kind of hard to compete with, the city of Rochester Hills is going to give them 14 acres of land. So, it's hard, yeah, it's kind of hard.
Well, the reason, the reason that I ask these questions is that I think that we need to do everything that we can to encourage people to stay within Troy, or continue to want to be here in Troy for development. But on the other hand, we don't want to give up all our standards either. I think that's very evident, and, but I just, I wanted to ask, because I was unclear what happened as I read through all that, and I thought, "Well, I'll just ask and see." I don't know if council members have any questions on any other items, or if they're going to wait until after Pam, while I check this, her major economic development activity. Anybody have anything yet? Okay.
Well, I will be brief. As John and Mark have already explained, and as you're already seeing, economic development is, we are in a very competitive situation to not just attract new companies to the city of Troy, but to retain the growing companies that we already have here in the city. And when you look at the factors that, that companies look at in making a site selection decision, there are things that are out of our control, and there's things that are in our control, and that's using the tools that we have available, and providing the best customer service that we can to make the process simple. So, in your package is an example of some of the projects that we have worked on here to date. This is not every company that has come to Troy, but these are projects that our economic development team has worked very hard to attract and retain to the community, retaining operations from existing businesses like Arben Meritor's upgraded technical center, retaining some of the companies that we have in Troy, and enticing them, or encouraging them to bring additional operations here to the city, such as Axel Tech, we saw it in the Troy Somerset, that they just had the grand opening of their new facility, Magna Powertrain, they're actually bringing their R&amp;D center here to Troy from New York, and then also attracting new companies to Troy that were not currently in the city, such as Witzenman moving into a facility on Stevenson, and, oh, Genesis Ten that's moving in on Livernoy. So, it, that, this looks, kind of gives you just the details of some of those projects, but, and this is just nine projects, but if you were to combine these projects total, with these projects, we're able to fill over 500,000 square feet of vacant space that we had here in the city. It's bringing an additional $56.7 million in new invest, new investment, that's new in personal property to the city of Troy, and the companies are projected to create 1,162 new jobs in, in the city as well, so. I'll just wrap it up.
Council members, do you have questions? I'd like to get that, that slide too, for the, yes, for something that I'm going to be doing. Okay, just that slide. I'd like the other one for the goals, too. I, I think that it's pretty evident by all of this information of what the Planning Commission has done, especially with the master plan, all the hard work and everything, and all through the years of, of doing things, and then with the zoning ordinances and form-based codes, that they're truly interested in moving us forward and helping us develop and move along. We appreciate, as a council, all the hard work of all the Planning Commission members. And I'd like to encourage Planning Commission members to be even more open arms to businesses that want to develop within Troy, and to, to let them really know that, that we, when they can, because there's a lot of things that come to Planning Commission that don't even come to council, you know, but that that's the message that we want to send out to, to people. And so, I think that whatever you, as, as Chair and Planning Commission members can do at their meetings to indicate that warm reception, whether it's somebody that's here that wants to do something more, or whether it's somebody new, that, that we indicate that. And I'm not saying that you haven't, I'm just saying I want to, I'd like personally to see you do it even more, because as John said in his opening, that this is really the only tool that we have left to encourage more investment within Troy.
We're on board with that, and that's why we've got a new master plan, these new zoning ordinances, it's going to make much easier to read. I can tell you, as a lawyer, I've tried to get through that code sometimes to find a question, and it's almost impossible. I, I think my kids could probably do it with this new code. It's going to be comprehensive, you're not going to have overlapping provisions which are contradictory, it's a tool that we're all looking forward to, to helping get economic development in Troy.
Good. And Council McCurry?
Well, I think we all recognize that time is money for developers, and also accessibility and ease matters as well. And as long as everybody at the table recognizes that we need to make that as easy as possible. I know Madam Mary referred to the step at the Planning Commission, but it's the part that we're greeted at the counter, and that we have those tools easily accessible, online, and ready to go. There's no doubt that we have some competition in nearby communities. Can we give away land that we don't have, like Rochester? No, we can't. But we can compete, as Dick Carlisle pointed out, in an innovative, new way that isn't found out there. My question for all of you is, when? When will these things be finalized? When will this be online? When can we say to anyone who wants to do some interesting things that we're ready to engage? Anybody?
Well, there's, there's, as Brent says, it's only we're, we're drafting the final two chapters, and which are really, we've gone through a lot of heavy work here, I mean, most of it now. The Planning Commission still has to finish up their review of some of the work, but they've been, I have to, I want someone to say, I want to compliment the commission, because when things have been submitted to them, they've reviewed it. You know, one of the problems we had in a lot of places, we, you know, we provide people stuff, and we don't get anything back. Well, they, they have. So, we are, we're going to have the district chapter probably completed in the next couple of weeks. We always put the definitions off to the end, you never know, you know, when you want to add definitions. So, we, we are, we are shooting to have this entire thing wrapped up by the end of this year.
Okay.
I can't afford to respond to that, I beg. Adopted, whatever, because you have to go through it. But we're going to have, I mean, we're going to have a complete, you know, we will have it completed, you know, within a matter, very shortly, a matter of, you know, a month, a month or so, and, and, you know, be putting just the final touches on it with the commission, you know, and, and, you know, to have it done by the end of this year.
Mr. Zerlai?
I was going to emphasize that economic development is at the forefront of all of our service delivery venues, and so much so that Mark and John and Pam and I took that into the manager's office, and worked with Brent and Dick, of course, as well, to make sure that we, as all of us, try to roll out the red carpets and not the red tape. And we've also realized that in working with developers and the building community, it's not how we think they're treated in that context, it's how they think they're treated in that context.
Right. I'm hoping that soon we'll have something come forward for Maple and Livernoy, that corner there is such a big area, I was pleased to see on the map, you know, from form-based codes and stuff, because I'm hoping that something creative and beneficial to the community will come forward for that particular area, because I think it's, you know.
That's been a spark we've been concentrating on, it's a troubled, troubled site.
Yes, well, it's been empty there, south of Kmart, and then when Kmart was gone, you know, it's, it's a big area, and it not only impacts us, but also Closet. And so, I think that it's, it's one that hopefully we can get something going there. Maybe, Councilwoman Beltrop, I think you were next.
The last item on discussion of this agenda is a discussion, now that we've heard the reports, and so I'd like to move into that if we could.
Okay.
And I, and I guess that, that, to, to begin that, great, wonderful. Planning Commission can get the zoning ordinance done as quickly as possible, and they're working toward that, and I do read the minutes, I do know that you read it and criticize it, and offer helpful suggestions to Dick, and I thank you. What do you need from us to make this happen?
I guess when we give you a draft that we think is good, pass it quickly.
We don't have to have a public hearing on that.
Even better.
It will be an item, but we don't have to.
Who was next? Oh, I didn't know whether Wade was raising his hand, or, okay.
Councilwoman McCurry asked how quickly this can happen. We're looking at the end of the year at the outside, then it's going to come to you folks, so the ball's going to be in your court, so.
We're ready.
You folks are going to be the ones that determine how quickly it's going to happen.
I guess, Madam Mary.
Council McCurry.
And Chair, I guess, again, it goes to really what Councilmember Beltrop said- And Chair, I guess, again, it goes to really what Councilmember Beltrame said, too. You heard the mayor say, "We would like the Planning Commission to behave in a certain way," or to be open, or whatever. And I do want to compliment you, I know for those of us who took the courses, everyone is trained, we know that you can artfully ask questions, and you know where your places are. However, what I, I think Councilman Beltrame was asking, not only in terms of the zoning, but what else would you see as a helpful connection between council and the Planning Commission? And you kind of brought it up, but it's open to anybody. I have a feeling you have some.
Well, and the other, the other thing about that, I'll jump in, Florin. We are the ultimate arbitrators of some of that economic development toolbox, and so that's a piece of it that we have to work with staff with, and you see part of that through variances in the like, but it, but it is a package, and it is a team that has to function, and cannot be done, although it's designed sequentially, it has to be integrated, deeply integrated to make it work.
I think we took a step last year with council's help in amending the ordinance, in which the process used to be that someone would come to the Board of Zoning Appeals first for a variance. Planning Commission would never see that until a variance is granted, and we'd look at it and say, "What? I mean, that really fouls up the site plan." You passed an amendment to the zoning court, which we really thank you for, because now they'll come to us first, we can comment on it, not give any directions. Hopefully, the zoning board reads our minutes, takes that in consideration when granting a variance, and then when it comes back, we're ready. So, the process is working, and we're fine-tuning it, but it's coming along, and it's part of the package and the plan.
And if I could just add to that, Brent's department, now that we have code enforcement and the liaison for BZA there, they're being very, very attentive in that they come in for a review meeting with us, and they are scheduled to go to the BZA meeting that month that's already been advertised. So, you know, we're doing everything we can to keep things moving as quickly as possible.
We see in some areas where there's the one meeting, and we're familiar with this, the one meeting with the Planning Commission and the council, where there's the one public hearing, and everything's done at the same time. I know you're familiar with that. I don't know if that's something that anyone would recommend or consider or something. It does speed the process. It's one single hearing, and at the end of that time, there is a decision that's made. I don't know if that would be helpful or not.
I've not seen that, but it seems to me that a lot of times when developers come in before the Planning Commission for approval of a site plan, we suggest things to them, don't tell them, suggest things that might make the plan a little better, and they'll think about it and say, "You know, let us come back and talk about that, and maybe we can do something." But I think if we combined it into one, we might miss that part of the process.
Councilwoman, Mayor Patton Fleming?
I think we're definitely moving in the right direction, this is good discussion. But I'm wondering if anyone on the Planning Commission, are there other bottlenecks that you see where you're hampered? I mean, we're going the right direction, we're doing a lot of things right, but as Councilwoman Curran said, time is money, and we have to roll out the red carpet. But are there other bottlenecks, constraints that you have as a Planning Commission? Because you guys are very knowledgeable, you work very hard, and we appreciate all your work, but do you feel sometime that you have certain constraints and you'd like to have a little more freedom, or some...
Just let our complaining consultant address that, he's nodding yes.
Okay. First of all, your current ordinance right now is the biggest one in the district.
Yeah.
You know, we have a super circumstance in that ordinance where you've got, you know, so many districts where there are permitted uses, uses permitted but with conditions and special uses, you know? And so, you know what? All of that's going to be cleaned up. That is going to be, that is going to be like the difference between night and day, and that's the point. Second of all, there are a lot of processes that, there's a lot of proposals that have to come before the Planning Commission that probably don't really need to. You know, we really should, we should give the, we should use all of your time in a very judicious manner, you know? And so, minor additions to things and stuff like that, there could be, there could be a lot more done administratively that really won't amount to a whole being a true master. The final thing has actually already been done, and that is by transferring the zoning administration to the planning department, because now interpretations are being done, I think, in a broader context of interpretation, what makes planning sense for that state. Your current ordinance really does give you some ability to make those interpretations. So, I mean, those right there are three things that I think are going to improve with the adoption of the new ordinance.
Wade?
Just to follow up, I don't want to streamline to the point that we take too much away from the Planning Commission. You say there are a lot of things that we could be doing administratively. Can you give me an example? I just want a concurrence from maybe the Chair or someone that, what you wanted to take away are really things that they feel should be taken away. I mean, I don't want, I don't want to streamline to the point that...
Well, no, but I can tell you, for instance, we have administratively, if we've got someone coming in for a change in the use or the zoning of a building, and it meets all the requirements, let's say, for the code, they hadn't come before us before. But now, the building department can administratively approve that, and if someone in the Planning Commission says, "Wait a minute, we want to take a look at it," they'll bring it back to us. But it speeds it up that way, it takes a lot of plans off the table before us, and that's being done now.
But you still see it. You may not have to act on it unless you desire it.
We'll get a report. And if somebody says, "Hey, I didn't know if we should have done that," bring it back, and there will be a hearing, and that's provided, too. But we've got a good planning department, and their judgment usually is pretty good.
Mark?
Just to sort of explain in a little greater detail, there is something called site plan approval, and the state law does not designate who has to be that approval body. It could be administrative, the Planning Commission, you could not even have site plan approval. So, in certain circumstances, there are other communities who have administrative approvals, where the planning department and the planner could administratively approve minor site plans, so that you could speed up those minor, but the important point is, is you have to identify what those minor processes are, and ultimately have both the Planning Commission and City Council agree to them.
I don't think the intent is at all to remove the Planning Commission's authority to review things in which their discretion and their judgment isn't, you know, as members of the community.
You supplement that for a minute. Some of these requirements that come before the Planning Commission, maybe a new survey, some engineering reports, and if really that's not necessary for a different use with that building where nothing structurally changes, we don't make the developer do that, which saves him a ton of money, too, and time.
Good.
Anyone else? There's people down there that haven't, that have been silent. Anybody else? Don Edmonds?
As the newest member of the Planning Commission, I would just like to go on record as saying, I think it's one of the most high-performing groups that I've ever been associated with. I think we do work well, and I think there's great respect for everybody's opinion. I was a little disappointed that the zoning ordinances are taking as long as they are. I know the City Council got a schedule a few months back that we should have been done by now. But I think in the long run, it will be an excellent one. And I, my only question is to the city staff and the City Council, how are we going to market this to, that's a really key component, just because we, you know, 10 days after the City Council passes it after the hearing, and it's a new ordinance, how are we going to communicate that to developers?
That's why we have Pam Valenteck as well now with Cindy Stewart attached to the manager's office. The marketability of what we can accomplish with our new ordinance and drawing development is key, and we'll, and we'll take any venues that we can, we'll put it on our website. I'm having monthly meetings with actual property owners of businesses, once a month, breakfast meeting. I bring in Mark and Pam, Cindy and John Lamorato. There's not much of an agenda, it's just like, we're here, and we want to know if you're doing okay here, and if you are, please tell your friends to locate their businesses here as well, and if we're not doing something okay, let us know, and we'll try to fix it. And we've had one meeting, it was successful, we tried to run it for an hour and a half, and wound up going over two hours, and our next meeting is next week. And we bring in the actual owners or the chairman of the boards, we're bringing in Nate Forbes, who owns, or part owner of the Somerset Collection, next week, we're bringing in Alan Kerlik, who owns the Columbia Centers. And so, we try to talk to people that employ between, in the aggregate, about 5,000 employees every month. So, after a year, we'll talk to owners of businesses that employ about 60,000 people in our city, and we want to hear from them what they think that we need to do to be better at what we're doing. And then we can also trumpet what we're doing to show our wares, if you will, to get their input, and also tell their network on what's going on. And we'll rely on you as well as individuals and as a group.
That's great, that's great. Just to follow up, what are we, how will we, could we, could we do this in some type of a conference setting, or, you know, for a large group of developers, or a, you know, a larger group, so it's automatically out there to everybody at once, or...
You're going to say yes, and then ask Mark to supplement that.
Well, that's a great idea. A very important point in developing an ordinance like this is to get the stakeholders buy-in. And we haven't totally developed everything we're going to do, but I can tell you, one of the things is, I've already talked to Michelle Hodges at the chamber, and we're going to make a presentation to the Economic Development Committee, and we're, once this solidifies, we'll develop a strategy on who to present it to, because I think we have to get in front of as many people as possible who are stakeholders in development in Troy.
John?
Mark, are you familiar, there's a building owners and managers roundtable.
Yeah, and Michelle was saying she was going to invite them to that meeting when we do it, so we're starting to work on it.
Bob?
I think one of the, excuse me, one of the most successful meetings that I've seen in the city since I've lived here was the open house that we had for the master plan up at the MSU Conference Center. And I would think that something along that line for stakeholders, developers and the public, but especially stakeholders and developers, could go a very long way, to where we set up booths and talk about the various chapters, and have both a planning commissioner and/or a council member and a professional explaining exactly what the benefit of all of these things are. It was very well received, it was on an absolutely nasty night, and we had hundreds of people show up. And I think, I think it was very well received, and it proved to everybody involved that it was a transparent operation, we weren't, we weren't playing a shell game. This is exactly what we're bringing forward.
But I suggest that for this, because it's more for business people that, that we have something during the day, if you want to have something in the evening, too, but I think there are people that'll want to come during the day that won't be coming at night.
Very good point.
And so, I think that would be important in getting the word out. Anybody else? Mark, back up?
One of the things that was mentioned, which is key for us, fast, fair, predictable decisions. And I really think one of the biggest problems we have today in society in general is just a breakdown in trust at every level. And we saw some of that tonight, we saw some of that at your meeting again tonight. A lot of people don't trust what the government has to say, a lot of people don't trust us when they come into our meetings. I think if you're predictable, if you're fair, if you're honest, and you continue, if you have integrity, then that wins out in the end. Another thing that's extremely important, it's about relationships, and we should never take relationships for granted. And with business people especially, I think we'll need to know that they are appreciated in this town, they need to know that we are glad that they are here, we want them to stay, we want to find out what will keep them here, and, but that's all about taking the time and having that enhanced relationship. So, in a sense, all of us are ambassadors for the city, and I think we need to remember that in our dealings, you know, with the public, with the business people, and as council and Planning Commission members.
Don Edmonds?
Are there other cities that have faster turnaround times on decisions, that are competing cities, like Rochester, or other communities that we're competing against? Do they have faster turnaround times for decisions?
There are, and there are some cities that are not local that have it, too, because I know Alan Kerlik's mentioned, you know, a number of things, and he goes all around, you know, everywhere.
What does it take for us to get there?
Ma'am Chair, I mean, I, I am a firm believer that we're pretty darn fast compared to most communities. Now, I don't think there's any way we compete with North Carolina, which Mr. Kerlik brings up, because they sit at a table and rezone the property and approve the development plan in one private meeting, which has been found illegal.
They do it there.
I think, but what you brought, Mr. Edmonds, is a fair thing, we, as part of the Zucker Report, they looked at, we're very competitive now. But what, sometimes it's not what we see, as John said, because we just heard some feedback from somebody who were saying that we weren't as fast as another community. But yet, we, we know that other community, we know what happens there. So, part of it is a sales job also, to make sure that the people who come through our offices believe that we're good, because just like everything, to a developer, we're always too slow. I mean, we really are.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councils ask what we think. May I ask what council thinks the Planning Commission should be doing that it's not doing, if anything?
Councilwoman McGinn? A comment, and it's not about something that I think that you're not doing, but I think that it reiterates the importance of the timeline and moving forward and this, and it has to deal with the trust from the people as well, because from everything that I've been learning along the way about the process, a lot of this started back when you had the Visions 2020, and a lot of the things that you heard from people in the community are things that were rolled directly into our master plan. And then obviously, to be able to implement all of the amazing and new ideas that were in there, and the changes that we wanted to make as a city, we need this document. So, I think that it will be very important to the citizens, to City Council, to have that piece implemented, because it shows that we've gone full circle. It goes from just having these groups that got together and put time and effort into coming up with what they wanted their community to look like, to the rest of us doing our part to get it from that point to the point where it's really going to be a reality.
That's really important. I remember when they started 10, 12 years ago with the Visioning Committee, and I think I said to Frank Gerstenreicher, "Well, okay, after the committee's wet, we got to forget it?"
Right.
We haven't.
Right.
And I think that's really good tribute to the citizens of Troy and council for pursuing that, and the Planning Commission with our consultants, the planning staff, are almost to the point of getting over the goal line with the code after the master plan, which is really visionary. These nodes are really an important part of the puzzle of walkability and making the city a city again, instead of just a community where people come and go at their own pace.
Robin?
The part I like best about that whole presentation, I will be real honest, is incentivizing the development we want, and making the stuff that we don't want way more difficult. Because right now, our ordinance is, y'all are equal, and we'd really like it done this way, but you don't have to, and it's okay. It's not okay. So, I like that a lot.
And showing the pictures, and the pictures of what that would look like, and here are the examples, and this is the advantage.
And we know that that's what they see in other communities, which is what makes it so much easier to do.
Well, you asked what the Planning Commission is doing or not doing that we all would like or like to comment on, and I think that the Planning Commission has specific duties that they perform very well, that council does not need to do. And you've had a lot on your plate in addition to these large items, you've had individual plans, people have come forward with, with development things, ideas, and, but you've all used your expertise to join... to join together to make decisions, and you don't always decide all the same, you know, but the majority will decide. But the thing that I like is the makeup of the planning commission and what you all bring to it, when you read the minutes, or you watch a, a meeting, or you hear about it, you can see that come forward, and, you know, you've had meetings with the Birmingham Planning Commission, too, so you've had a lot, lot to do, and so I think you should be complimented on that. There's, there's always going to be people that are saying, "Oh, you're too picky on some little item or something," but I think that that, some of that comes from the backgrounds that you draw from, you know, because some of you are architects, some are engineers, some are attorneys, you know, and, and so you, you, you bring all of that to the table, so you're still looking at the details, and so I don't say there's anything wrong with that, it's just that, again, it's, it's how people perceive everything, but I do think that the planning commission serves very well in, in this community through our boom years and now through our lean years, but we do always have to have the goal as what we're setting down for the future, because everything that we're putting into place here is something that's going to impact the community for many years.
We're blessed, we're blessed that council has chosen a variety.
Right.
On the commission, and while we may disagree in commission, when it's done, it's always a good result. Some of us lose, some of us win, but in the bigger picture, the city wins. Thank you for using variety.
You're welcome. Any other comments on the discussion? Because we started another meeting, we have to ask about public comment at the end. Is there anyone that wants to make a public comment at the end here?
I just have one.
Mrs. Dambroski?
Audrey Dambroski, I just think it was a very nice meeting, it's the first one I went to, they had the planning commission, and there was a lot of respect for each other, more so than, than we go just to compliment.
Thank you.
Thank you, men, for being nice, but I think you need a woman on here also.
Well, we, we've had several, in fact, several are.
We've had three.
They've gone other places, yes, that's what I mean.
Four right here.
Four, yeah. All right, thank you. If there's no other items to come before us, then we're in adjournment. Thank you all for...